At this time, I'll put them on mute and whatever we need to do. Uh, it's now five forty-five. We're starting the council meeting in a little bit later. We have some technical issues and some other legal matters we have to clear up real quick. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight. First, we're gonna have a, uh, uh, invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance and invocation of councilman O'Reilly.
That was great. Father, daughter, thank you tonight for allowing us all to be here. Thank you, God, for life, health, and strength. And thank you for being so good to us. Thank you for this great city of Bogalusa that we all love. Pray, God, for the team to watch over this city. Bless everyone, God, that's involved with this city. And I pray, God, this meeting tonight will be a blessing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
At this time, I want to vote to take off Act three ninety-three, amended twenty twenty-three, open meetings law, which allows Councilman Kelles to attend virtually because of his disability. Welcome to Councilman Kelles. Uh, this time we have roll call.
Councilwoman Smith?
Here.
Councilwoman Kate?
Here.
Councilwoman Elvery?
Here.
Councilwoman Temple?
Here.
Councilwoman Kelles?
Councilman Kelles?
Archbishop Irvin?
Here.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Here.
All right, uh, next we have approval of the minutes, uh, held until fifteen twenty twenty-four.
Motion. Second.
Okay, we got motion and second. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Elvery?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelles?
Aye.
Archbishop Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
All right, next we have recognitions award. We don't have any. And adoptions of resolutions, we don't have any on that of agenda. Uh, next we have the, uh, introduction of ordinances. The first introduction is to read, be read by Councilwoman Kate.
An ordinance to dedicate the remaining balance of American Rescue funding funds to water and sewer infrastructure. This will be discussed at our next council.
Okay. Next we have our ordinance to be read by myself. Uh, an ordinance allowing allocating the remaining funds and enacting the better Bogalusa twenty twenty-five plan. This will be out for discussion at our next council meeting Tuesday, December seventeenth. Uh, next we're moving on over to public carries and, uh, adoption of ordinances. Uh, this is also ordinance to be read by me. An ordinance of the Bogalusa, uh, ordinance of the city council of the city of Bogalusa authorizing an attorney to retain Amanda, the city attorney to retain Amanda Plecy, uh, to provide legal services in the area of civil services, union negotiations, and employment matters to address the ongoing and anticipated issues. Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Okay.
Can you say? Two seconds.
Oh, sorry, motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Public discussion on attorney, um, Amanda. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
I just like an explanation about why.
Turn your microphone on to the mic.
I don't know the problem there. Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to know why. Very simple. Okay? Why do we need, we have an attorney. Why do we need another one? What function are we going to serve? And we have a meeting last time and he said we didn't need one. He went and what had to do with the city council and, uh, now we're changing it. Not that I just came on. Thank you.
We're, we're not changing it. We currently have an employment attorney. Uh, his name is Michael Weiner out of Saint Tammy. Uh, he's retiring at the end of this year. And he has referred us to Ms. Plecy to move forward.
All right.
Is there any other public discussion on this matter? All right, thank you, none. We move to council discussion. Any council discussion on this matter?
Uh, yes, I do have to discuss if, uh, the administration could possibly, uh, respond to the salary of Ms. Plecia. Her salary?
She is, every other attorney who works for, uh, any government entity in the state of Louisiana would be paid based upon attorney general's hourly rate, which I believe is two hundred and fifty an hour. That's what our current attorney, um, our current employment attorney is paid. So it's not a change in budget. It's simply just a change in who will be represented in the city due to retirement.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, mayor, also I have a question. To just be clear, this is going to come out of legal services fund in the budget. Is that correct?
Correct. Legal and profession.
Which of them, uh, Mr. Weiner will be going away and she will become, um?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from council about this matter?
Do we look into any more, um, legal aids, legal services? Or are we just using them because they were afforded by Mr. Mike?
Uh, can attorneys, uh, know which attorneys are best suited for work as she comes home and recommended? And we did not do. We did not do individual, uh, research. This is strictly off of Mr. Winner's recommendation. He has been extraordinary in work rate, so I trust his judgment.
Um, is this person working already?
Yes, we've included all of her background in the past two council, uh, patents.
And you said she, she's replaced and it's with me. Was trying to go over things for us.
Correct.
How long he was with us?
Uh, I believe since we've been here probably in March of twenty-two.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You agree on what?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any other council discussion? Councilor Mike?
Yes, this is another new city of Bogalusa that always had an attorney in this road. This is such a specialized road. And even in the twenty-five or thirty years that Mr. Dale was over there, he had attempted to handle the empowerment issue. He knows how to handle it. You always bring someone who specializes in it. And this young lady comes highly recommended, uh, resumes and peppered. She's been a huge analyst, sued the lawyer for five or six years. We not going to find anyone better in this area nowhere in Spelling.
Uh, attorney, you mentioned it, uh, attorney Dale. Uh, we hired in additional, uh, attorneys when, during his tenure? Is that, we hired additional attorneys during attorney Dale Branson's tenure?
Always had some attorneys. Dale never had the talent, everything would probably fall for. For one example would be attorney Wolf. That's not on this.
Oh, yeah, bond attorney.
When you need other attorneys to come in, it would be unrealistic to expect Dale or any other one attorney to be able to handle every type of matter or issue that this power would encounter.
Okay, any other council discussion? If not, we're going to close it. And I'm going to ask for roll call secretary boards.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilman Elvery?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kelles?
Councilwoman Kelles?
Aye.
President?
Aye.
Okay.
Archbishop Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
All right, the motion does pass. All right, at this time we also have another, uh, ordinance. I'm going to read it and then I'm going to call for executive session. Uh, at this time we're going to read the, uh, ordinance authorizing the city Bogalusa to pay a sum of ten thousand dollars and no sense to land in Thames. At this time, our Louisiana law, we're going to call for, uh, for executive session. Only the city council, mayor, and city attorney may attend that meeting.
This is the first, please, please, call, call. Take the reason for the executive session.
I just stated it.
I didn't hear. Say again.
Once again, uh, ordinance authorizing the city Bogalusa to pay a sum of ten thousand dollars and no sense to land in Thames. So we have to, we can't discuss anything dealing with this at all. All votes will be made in here once we have.
I don't think I know what to go on. He's employed, he's employed.
This time we're going to reconvene the meeting, restarting the meeting this time. Okay. Uh, here. All right, yeah, just leave it, just leave the phones on, okay? All right. Now, all right. This time I'm going to ask, I'm going to reread the ordinance. We're now out of the executive session. It says an ordinance authorizing the city of Bogalusa to pay a total of ten thousand dollars and no cents to land in payments. All right? Do I have a motion and a second?
I will. Okay.
Six.
All right, I have a motion and a second. This time we're going to have public discussion. Okay? We're going to close public discussion, now we're going to have council discussion. So he'll be brought up to the seat and then public discussion, and then council discussion.
Mark.
Yeah, you're going to have to stay on the phone, okay? Whatever's going on, you're not staying on the phone because we're doing things, okay?
Yeah, okay.
All right. All right. We're going to put him on mute. Uh, he won't be allowed to, all right? To determine those. All right, next, we're going to have roll call on this matter.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Leary?
All right.
Councilwoman Simple?
Aye.
Krista Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Mark, you there?
We'll discuss, we'll discuss that later, Kings. We'll discuss that later.
I just wanted to do this later, I just wanted to watch your agenda.
Yeah, I'm still here. All right.
Okay, good. Very like you left. Right off your feet.
All right, next, we got the, uh, an ordinance to approve, uh, no, wait, sorry. Uh, we're going to move, we're going to move that to the last, we're going to go ahead and get the planning and zoning out of the way because that may be lengthy about the budget. So, uh, we're going to go ahead and, uh, and do a ordinance read by, we're going to do a planning and zoning by Councilwoman Cates.
Yes.
Yeah, we're going to do the planning and zoning requests first.
An ordinance to...
We're going to follow up.
Our ordinance to provide a planning and zoning request for a special use permit for Just Us Home Away From Home to use as a residential home in A1 residential as a daycare. Now, this particular, uh, organization, Just Us Home Away From Home is an organization that was established by Ms. Rhonda, uh, Rhonda...
Arrenday.
Arrenday. And Ms. Arrenday has several services that she's provided, and you might be wondering why, uh, it's on the particular agenda as an ordinance. And that's primarily because it's a special use permit, uh, the planning and zoning deemed a special use permit to be passed on to the council because she currently has the same type of zoning within her, within her residence. Uh, she has, uh, power services from one to five years, special needs services, uh, and special programs that she provides to the community. Is Ms. Arrenday here tonight? Would you come forward, Ms. Arrenday, please?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to start by saying who I am and who I am. Who I am is a child with God. Who I am, my name is Rhonda Arrenday. Uh, I reside in 8267 Street, Bogalusa, Louisiana. I am coming for you today, um, to bring a daycare, a childcare, um, Just Us Home Away From Home childcare. Um, I guess you are a candidate, um, and you agree it's about us. Um, it's, uh, our mission statement in here. Um, the services of age will be, um, I will be licensed from one to ten, but, you know, that'll be in the summer time when they come, uh, but, uh, the younger of you ages one to ten. Then also, I would have a couple slots for the special needs because a lot of daycare is on tape, um, the special needs. So I've been specialized in that, um, for thirty-five years. So I'm well trained and equipped for that. And then it talks about the summer program and then our community events and everything. But the most important thing that, uh, I will mention is I love to serve my community, but this is one of my passions that I love and I only add to the community because we are a triadic community. Uh, also with that, we'll be able to bring jobs and I will be able to, um, employ eighty employees. And then also, um, I have here, this is Kamala Dorsey, uh, he will be my director there for me. And, um, he can kind of tell y'all a little bit about, um, what we're, what we're employing, we're training them and then, um, live training also for the special needs if you want to talk with me here.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank the board for giving us this opportunity, uh, to present this for y'all, for y'all. My name is Kamala Dorsey. I drove forward to have a office today just so I don't miss this moment here, uh, because I've been working alongside Ms. Arrenday for the last twelve years and I was doing a lot of volunteer until, and I knew my passion. My passion always has been for youth, special, special needs. That's why she has something that she can name me now, she started in the city of Bogalusa. And honestly, I always say, "Why Bogalusa?" And she said, "Why not?" So why not Bogalusa? And she was very passionate about it. So I'm not going to go too much about it, but we have the knowledge, skills, and abilities, we want to write for Just Us Home. Because we know, I know, I'm not sure about y'all, but I lived in the daycare while my parents started working, while they were establishing their careers. The daycare was my second home, they knew me more than my mom. My dad knew me during that time, but I have established a lot during that time from birth to five years old. And we got this saying every single day, you can't teach a kid how to think. We don't teach a kid what to think, but how to think, and it starts there. And we know that Bogalusa is thriving and we have a lot that we're pouring in state of art, evidence-based research-based, that we're trying to build here. And one thing that's different is that when she spoke about, and I'm not going to peel you up, is special needs. And we know now statistics say, once two out of every five kids now have been born with special needs. And daycare is now a terminal around, it's around Arrenday, and we're going to accept those kids. So they don't have to go outside of Washington Parish and go to Saint Anthony, we noticed it was going to Saint Anthony to provide services for kids with special needs, we want to stop that now. And this is an innovative portion we have, and we want to build here in Washington Parish and Bogalusa. We are allowed to do so, this is one of many. Please grant us that opportunity to give back to communities that she and I now rooted. And that's, that's it for us, and hopefully be here more.
All right. Thank you. Before we go on the floor, stay right over here after any further questions.
Absolutely.
Did you have to get a motion and a second?
Yes, I would like to say, I would like to make a motion as to the ordinance agreed.
I was thinking it.
What this is to recap is asking for a special use permit at the, uh, 824 East Seventh Street so for the purpose of op, uh, operating a daycare center. That's in a nutshell, so the public will understand. All right? Do you have, if you have any questions?
Turn your mic on.
She's at the mic.
Okay. If you have any questions, please come to, uh, front and state your name and address for the record. And if you have questions for the petitioners, that's what they're called, is when they're petitioning the cities. All right? Does anybody from the public have questions? If not, uh, anybody, please come forward. Good, good afternoon, Mr. Corsetti. Please state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to answer any questions.
Richard Corsetti, 764 Miles for Richardson Road. I've got a couple questions for yous. Um, the thing is, this is a home that's going to have children in it and everything, and, um, it's like someone moving into your house next door, do you really want those children in, right by your yard? And I think really, um, you should have a lot of residents that are in that neighborhood that you really, uh, see if that's what they want. Is this, is this a commercial building?
Well, I, I can suggest that, Mr. Corsetti, uh, Ms. Arrenday's establishment has been cleared through the fire marshal. She has all of her permits, her permits, that she in a packet that's the, uh, the council has. And she also has, I believe, a petition within the five hundred mile radius that's required.
Ain't seen the front page or signed off.
Okay, well, I don't know none of this, this is what I'm asking you.
That's a great question.
You guys are going to tell everything.
That's a great question. So we're being told.
So, I mean, I'm only hearing what you're saying tonight.
That's a great question.
So that's what I wanted to know. It's just like a lot of buildings here, they're all in the little cities here, and they're commercial buildings, commercial things are going on. And really, to me, in Bogalusa, seeing people working out of houses is not what I'm used to. When you open up a business, you're in a storefront. And normally, that's what I see that goes on. You're mostly in a storefront, not running in houses. And when I see all these offices going on in houses, I'm not used to that.
Um, Mr. Corsetti, Mr. Corsetti, just to give you a little bit more information moving forward for 2024, 2025, we can also validate, um, the state also recommends when you are actually dealing with kids on any type of weather, is to keep it as most home-like as possible. So that's just to give you a little advice. Ms. Michelle did, um, certainly in the neighborhood, is district did. She did have a business there previously, we're just going into a different type of business and a change of angle.
Okay, the reason why I asked, we have child investors in the neighborhoods too.
Yes, yes.
And we need to make sure that's clear.
Yes.
You know, and what's going to come.
And that's about it, so thank you so much.
Yeah, okay, thank y'all.
I mean, can we rebuttal or just?
Yes, you can.
All right, I'm going to address them, uh, let's say again.
Mr. Corsetti. Mr. Corsetti.
As I said, I appreciate it, I want to, I want to talk to somebody so I can tell them the record. So, thank you, y'all. Again, for, so this previously zoning as a daycare previously, right? And I want to leave off, because their child is necessarily, just like the child everybody, but here we're going to have kind of a security right now. I mean, we don't block a hospital here.
Is that the Frank Mill Building?
Yes, it is.
It is, I'm happy to see it.
I see, my mind crowded.
There you go. You know what, I'm going to bring the kids if somebody else is going to need to. So, uh, we're a little secure, we never had any shit out previously in the neighborhood before. We just had a different change of direction. All right, but here we're going to enhance it, we already did it with security measures, uh, even technology that we can directly link to our local police department here. So do you have any other, yes, come on up to the podium. You want to hear it, right? I want, you want to change your answer?
I'll do it, all right?
Yes, sir, all right, yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Corsetti.
Hi.
Uh, if you don't, take your time.
I can say a quick question.
State your name and address for the record.
Deborah Corsetti, 764 Marshall Richardson Road. And I'm just saying, I'm looking at this picture on that, you know, on the map, because could y'all put a fence up maybe? So the children can have a...
So yes, you do have to put it up.
And the kids want to play everywhere in the thing? We have this fence and where they can get...
Yeah, no, we haven't had any access to the street, and that's more of a racial, a child racial, we don't have that. So, so that's why we're talking about full-time staff. So anybody has a claim, I was already placing that. So if you don't have a, I'll pitch you my show, you should listen right now.
Uh, did we have a picture on the...
So the playground area is like a school, it's not missing front. The school's not missing front. There are access coming upstairs, but it may be missing back, so it's the same.
Oh, I know about our hat in the school, it's like fenced all the way.
But I tell you what, we have... We may try it at home.
Maybe at home.
Ms. Dan, Kamala, uh, good afternoon, please state your name and address for the record.
Lily Martina, Madison, 9004 St. Columbia Street, Bogalusa. And, uh, I just wanted to, uh, speak to council for a moment. I am the mother, uh, now, of a special needs child, he has autism, he's six years old. I also have his brother who's three years old. And my six-year-old is in a class of a hundred, of, uh, twenty-five kids with one teacher. He doesn't know how to write, but he's being skipped place to place. So anything that there is, uh, if you've got to make acceptance for special needs kids, I'm a hundred percent sure that any parent of an autistic child in Bogalusa is happy because our kids are being neglected and ignored.
All right, I can, can I speak on that? Thank you. I appreciate, I, I appreciate it, thank you for coming up. So I'm going to tell you something, we do have rush to be in there, and right now the school, the ratio of the school is a little bit more. And right now there's a way to this, we can call a rush to this instead of these that has these autism centers. And so we need to go into some special, all right? We want to bring that here in Bogalusa in a smaller ratio, and we do not turn the kid away. We're bringing you here, and then we're going to work in conjunction with the Department of Education and see what we can do. So when we transition to school, we already have a case story, right? And so that's what we're doing too. And that's why special needs is a, it is, it's great because we know and need for special needs in Bogalusa. And that is sharing, that's what we want to do. We want to do that and we're going to continue to do that with council people, and once you see that we have the evidence and research base, we want to build it. There's nothing here in Bogalusa, why not start here in Bogalusa? There's nothing here in Bogalusa, why not start here in Bogalusa? All right, we, again, I'm, I'm going to be honest with y'all. When we first came here, over twelve years ago, I said, "Hey, why, why Bogalusa?" Because I had the idea right into the beginning, I said, "Why not Bogalusa, my community grew in it, and I've been here for twelve years, that's resulted in us." And, hey, we just want to build for that, sir. I'm Tomi Robson, 1127, there, just to give you a little confidence in what you're doing, keep going. We in full support of what you're doing, we in full support of Bogalusa, Bogalusa needs, Bogalusa needs, babe. Like you say, it's nothing new. So anything that anybody is trying to do for the youth, I think the council should really, you know, yeah, make their head. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Any other public discussion on this matter? All right, council discussion, what's your name, sir?
Kamala. I'm sorry. Kamala Dorsey.
I was very impressed by your presentation.
Thank you.
I, I'm a, I'm a former planning and zoning member, and you can tell, given the current planning and zoning numbers, that's very... I, I'm a, I'm a former planning and document member, and you can tell, give the current planning and documenters very well. Many people can't describe what they want when they come in, and don't have the proper documentation and all that. And then we have to do all, the planning and document has done a lot of research. And I applaud them for doing their work, that is, that is very important. And I applaud you on your presentation. Any council discussion?
I have no questions, do you have an opening day in mind?
Um, as soon as it.
Yeah, we need approval.
Y'all everything wants it, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
We have this, um, my opening day, hopefully, I will.
So we're, we're, we're projecting with, with the city approval blessing, right? We're trying to do it at the top of spring next year. It's been delayed, and as it delays, we've been having to reset and reset. Uh, but we don't want to reset anymore, we want to start and build. And so, the projection date is, is spring. As soon as we know. You want to ask something?
I don't have a question, but I, I do have a comment. I do know that, uh, Ms. Rinde has been seeking this goal for some time. Uh, many of you know her in her cabinets, uh, carnival every year, and it advocates.
For Saturday, I agree.
For special needs as well. So I, I think it would be a good, a good thing as well, to continue to hold. And, and she, she's very thrilled in, in, um, in fundraising, and, uh, seeking grants would have to support her particular contest, yes.
Well, let me make a correction, Ms. Rinde, Rinde had been diligent.
Yes.
Doing that in fashion for seven years with City of Bogalusa. She were handy, and that's, that, she was a lot about character for a person. She never stopped, you know, when things got challenging, right?
Exactly.
So anybody that come in, is Calum's heart was this up from the Saturday, or from one to four here in Bogalusa, give back to the community, this is the seventh, the seventh annual year, and we keep growing, want to continue to grow. So that was all the topic, we're happy that you mentioned that, and that just shows us, so appreciate it.
I, I just want to say, congratulations to you, Michelle, and next time you bring somebody, he'll make sure he don't wear his shirt on.
And I'd just like to add, I love you being here timely.
Right here, brother.
I'd like to add, I love you being here timely, but I do like you, a person, your flowers, and your students. Her services will be open from Monday through Friday from seven AM to five to five PM. But let me tell y'all as citizens of this great community, and the services will be held in the great district. Ms. Rinde has been, um, committed to, um, providing services to the kids for a long time. And when I work at the center, I've, I've had the, um, the pleasure of touring the, um, facility, that she's going to, um, help put the kids to home. When this center is closed, family members can bring your children in, she offers free food. So anyone who needs extra services, it is free. She's not asking you to pay anything, she's not asking you to bring you any food. She's just asking you, if you feel your child needs, to please just bring your child to get the extra services. Now, she may get me for telling too much of her business, but she's just like me, she's forgiving, and she deals from the heart. And she's sincere in everything that she does. I know personally, that she had to start over again and purchase new equipment, because she donated some to those that were in need. She donated the beds to some young mothers who needed beds for their children. So I just want to tell you, thank you for all that you do. And continue to do it, and to your staff, to your family. And I know the corner board is coming up, you know, I have a lot going on, but let me tell y'all about Michelle. She don't care if she had one, one worker or none, she's going to be a girl. So just thank you, and may God continue to bless you, and bless your family, and all your workers, and your helper. And God bless you and save Travis back.
I appreciate it.
To you, Mr. Comeon.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, this time, we're going to ask for, uh.
Barbara Ross, President, Mr. President.
Uh huh.
I have a question, Ms. Rinde. Ms. Rinde, this is Councilman Kellis. Uh, don't you, don't you have some handicapped children in your facility right now?
No, I have two special needs children that are my children that I adopted. Calum Rinde and Darren Smith. Um, they have their own wing come to the home, because they have PCA workers and nurses that come to, to them, while I go to work. They're in my home, they're my children, I have two special needs kids.
Yes, ma'am. And don't, some of the workers you have certified, is that true to help with these kids?
Yes, sir, I have certified nurses in the home. I have LPNs and RNs, and I also have, um, the PCA workers, they are licensed assistants, and everybody do their work, they are all certified. And, um, they have special training, um, dealing with childcare, and also, that's why I want y'all to know, with this daycare coming forth, not only the regular basic training, it's going to be extra special training, so we'll be equipped to handle anything.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that. And, uh, you, you know me, in the past fourteen years, as I came to your house on several occasions, two or three times a day, isn't that true?
Yes, sir, Mr. Kellis, um, he will come and deliver to my children.
Facility down there, and I happen to know that you run a pretty good facility, and that, uh, you have capable workers down there, and that you will continue to provide, uh, certified workers in the future, and I think we should move forward, and, uh, I'm going, that's all I'm going to say on this matter, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kellis.
Now, we're, at this time, we're going to have roll call.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Ree?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kellis?
Aye.
Mrs. Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Depp?
Mr. Criff, I'm going to ask that you describe Mr. Kellis, both of these ever will visit the care, because he will attend the meeting, left, he was going to take the vote by the poll, and he knows it.
Okay. Saying that we can't do this, but, so it's going to be strong. I'm not, I'll tell everybody about that. One moment. All right, uh, is that going to pull the shadows? Is that the current side?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'll talk, I'll talk to the attorney later about that later, uh, so I get a clear understanding. All right, now, uh, at this time, we're going to, uh, move to the budget. Um, a ordinance, a ordinance to approve and adopting the City of Bogalusa operating budget in council's budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Okay, I make a motion, or I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second, public discussion.
Again, we filed for a fourteen, Mr. City, I mean, did you, uh, provide a budget for people to view at library?
There was a copy, yes, put placed by Jerry Bailey, and I did, I did see it.
At the library?
Yes, I did see it.
Um, is that a show that wasn't, I had to look at. I, if you look at your paperwork that you have right now, that was presented to the council, it's probably about twenty-five pages there, maybe one. We could have easily done a summary of all of those pages and have it available for viewing, and get every single person in this audience a copy of the budget, so that we can view, review it. It's really unfortunate, having, I know we had a finance meeting, and we, finance meeting is not accessible to everybody. People can't make that one, we, it needs to be online, there's no excuse for not having this budget online, but people can view it.
Point of information, the budget has been online since it was approved.
Well, I looked it up, and it's not listed on the packet today for the council meeting. Why is it, no, I hope this morning, this evening, it's not listed on the packet, or is it listed?
The budget has been on the website since it has been reviewed.
Okay, but when you look at the city council website, I didn't know to go and look at that. And that's not about y'all, I'm talking about the council. Not only that's where you can find the information, it's going to be voted on by the city council. No, not saying anything about you. But if I'm going to look for information, I'm going to look in where it's supposed to be, which is the city council. You couldn't present this, um, it's really hard, and you talk, what, six months, a year for the last budget to be approved? And we're pretty disappointed in this one, in the seven months, with one chance to put it on there. I'm disappointed, thank you.
Could possibly make a comment to the judge?
Just, just, just to the judge.
This time, the rights, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I would like to reiterate, uh, Ms. McLeod, yes, the budget, after we received it, uh, received it, I believe, uh.
November fourteenth.
Yeah, November fourteenth, it was listed, it was on the city website, and it was also on the council. The link was on the council, uh, website as well. And in addition to that, as y'all discussed during my comments about the four meetings that we had, finance committee meetings, which was posted on the front door, and, uh, on the website, so we, I'll talk about it a little bit later.
Barbara Ross, eleven twenty-seven, ever since. And I just got a question for the council, have we received any financial statements, credit reports, that we received any, in that? Financial part in the question, that's on council, have we received any of that?
Not any of the physical requests that we made.
So we, we received none yet? Okay.
Like I say, the actual spark in the two thousand twenty-five proposal, up until August thirty-first.
All right, any other public discussion about the budget? We're going to focus on the twenty-five budget right now, public discussion.
Deborah Corsetti, seven sixty-four Marshall Richardson Road. Um, I just wanted to bring up about the ARPA funds, I guess that's part of the budget too. Um, I wanted to suggest, well, let's just start here. I noticed that a lot of the, um, expenses are journal entries, and I would suggest that you get the journal detail, so you can see what makes up that, those figures. Because journal entries are done manually, like they're condensing a lot of figures into one number. So if it were me, I want to see what was in the detail of that journal entry.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Corsetti. All right, any other public discussion about the twenty twenty-five operating budget? I'm going to close public discussion, at this time, council discussion.
I do have council discussion, I just have a couple of notes here, where, uh, there were numerous, uh, financial, uh, meetings, uh, that were held, concluded on November, excuse me, if I interrupted. Uh, for November twenty-sixth, November twenty-second, November nineteenth, November fourteenth, and that's including the public hearing that was on November twenty-sixth. Uh, I do have a sign in the sheets of all of the meetings, and reviewing the, uh, the budget itself. Um, the attendance of meetings, uh, I should say, uh, there was minimum, uh, in finance for our, uh, administration in our meetings, and I do, and I do note that the administration had indicated due to obligations, uh, of administration. Also, uh, during these meetings, there were errors found throughout the budget. Okay, mayors, including mayor's letter, and I'm pretty sure that Mr. Bailey, before his, uh, his demise, he may have corrected some of those, not demise, but, uh, his departure, I don't know whether it was a, uh, I don't know whether it was a, a termination or resignation, but his departure. He may have corrected some of those in the, uh, in the mayor's section. And also, uh, there was no, the beginning in any ba, the beginning in any balances, there was, uh, questions as well as a personal, I'm just going over briefly, because this is the actual budget here. And it's so many, it's so many pages within it, but I'm going to brief, briefly, some of the findings during the, uh, the finance meetings. Um, the personal lottery chart, which indicates how many are within a particular department, that, uh, some updating, as well as the organizational, uh, chart itself. Uh, there was District A, B, and C, but D and E was missing. Also departmental, uh, some of the departmental, uh, folks that were there, they had questions about their salary concerns, and inquiries, uh, were forwarded to, uh, the last meeting we had, any other inquiries that, that the public may have had, would go to info@bogalusa.org. Uh, I'm not sure that we received, you know, many questions to, uh, info@bogalusa.org, but that was a leadway, uh, for folks to, uh, since we did not have, uh, the public hearing was not, uh, there were like maybe five or six people that came. So it was shared, uh, that folks could have their, their, uh, particular questions to, be forwarded to info@bogalusa.org. Uh, Mr. Sanders, were you able to, um, to monitor Bogalusa, uh, info@bogalusa.org? Did we receive many questions?
I can speak to that.
Yes, sir.
This morning, when I got in my office, I put in a public records request for any inquiries regarding the two thousand twenty-five budget. And got this back from the Director of Human Resources. Good morning, Mayor Tron, in response to your inquiry, I have not found any ones containing inquiries for or related to the two thousand twenty-five budget. Please let me know if additional information is needed regarding this matter, respectfully, Leslie S. Piddin.
Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to make one additional thing. On top of Chairwoman Kate, she's the Chair of the Finance Committee, we did have three budget hearings on the two thousand twenty-five operating budget. Those are public meetings, and they were loaded up to YouTube, and they were live-streamed by, and I appreciate Mr. Sanders taking his time with us and uploading them to YouTube. On, on November the twenty-sixth, immediately after that last finance meeting discussion of budget, we came in here, and it was publicly advertised, and we, and, we introduced the two thousand twenty-five operating budget, and we also attempted to have a public hearing. At that time, no one showed up except the police officers. So, um, the next thing we've done is we're here tonight to vote on this budget, which is the December, is December third. We're following exactly what we ran in the day of the news. Uh, we're staying on track, and we're within charter requirements, uh, on the, uh, on the budget. Uh, we did at that twenty-sixth hearing, say that if anybody had questions, to send them to the info@bogalusa.org, if they had any questions on the two thousand twenty-five operating budget. Now, uh, the operating budget was passed around, I haven't seen links to it on Facebook. It was all.
Well, not on my Facebook.
I'm just telling you, I understand, I understand. I'm just telling you, I understand, I understand, it's a problem. But the, anyway, any other, uh, I think this is pretty much, uh, we have not, um, as a full disclosure to the public, we have not received any, uh, per our ordinance, or request that was made. Ordinance twenty-eight-twenty, we received no income, no balance sheets, or anything for this year that is legitimate. Um, we have not received the credit card statements for the two thousand twenty-four. There are five credit cards here in City Hall. We have not received any of their statements, uh, that we requested in that particular ordinance, which is twenty-eight-twenty. Some of y'all might remember, we were, y'all were sitting here, I see some of y'all looking, some of y'all were sitting here when we made that ordinance. And the mayor vetoed it, and we vetoed over it. That was a public records request and an open meeting in state law. So, with that said, I'm going to ask if there's any other council discussion on this matter. If not, then we'll have roll call then. Secretary Ford, roll call please.
Councilwoman Smith?
Nay.
Councilwoman Cake?
Nay.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Nay.
Councilwoman Aubrey?
Nay.
Councilwoman Temple?
Nay.
Mr. Urban?
Nay.
Councilwoman Depp?
Nay.
We have one last bit of business. We got amended agenda. I'm asking for amendment of the agenda. At this time, I'm asking for the amendment of agenda for the re, resolution to request a physical administrator from the state of Louisiana legislative auditors. We don't have, all right, do I have a motion of amendment? This is amendment only, not the vote. Right, we have a motion and second, public discussion, you'll have three minutes. This is amendment agenda only. All right, Ms. McLeod, go ahead.
Tell me about what we're doing in the city, I mean, what kind of is this? That you hold off on telling anybody about it, or doing it with me with no explanation and no information, and then you expect public comment?
Comment, pardon, on order, it has to be read first, this is...
Well, he's getting public comment, so I shouldn't have thought in this.
Just a minute, just a minute.
This is amendment only, we're not...
Amendment what?
We're amending the agenda to accept a resolution, ma'am. We're amending the agenda, okay? We're amending the agenda to accept a resolution request by a physical administrator from the state of Louisiana legislative auditors.
You under, you understand that this is how it is, that this is a game play. You're well aware of this at the beginning of the meeting, this is not new. You could have introduced this at the beginning of the meeting so people could look it up, could be prepared. But instead, you chose to wait till the very last meeting and, and have squeezed through with absolutely no time for anybody to gather any information. This is the type of game play that really makes me sit in terror in this council.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. 1127 Levee Chay.
Counsel. Now, remember, we're just amending, we're not even trying to vote yet.
I, I understand exactly what's going on.
Okay.
And if you keep up, you'll know exactly what need to be done. And I, and y'all doing a good job. Y'all can get exactly what y'all is doing is what we need. Exactly what y'all doing is what we need. That's what y'all was elected to do, to, to put up ball reps and to protect the citizens of Bugusa, to push people in compliance when they don't want to do what they, you got to make them do right. So, thank you, counsel, appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Please take the time address for our colleagues.
Thank you for, uh, nineteen thirty-one D Q. Mr. Robinson talking about when people don't do right, they do right. I don't see where the council is doing right. I haven't seen where the council been doing right for quite a few years. So, seeing like he didn't get on track. They know what you're talking about when he fell off his feet, because he don't know what you're talking about. So, he's tying up all this game plan, and lets everybody get on board and move Bugusa along, cannot just BS.
Once again, this is amendment only.
Hi, Lily, in that nine-four South Carolina Street. I rarely come to council meetings, and it's one of the reasons is because of this, because it's like an embarrassment. And, um, one of the reasons I don't, um, I didn't vote for Donald Trump, but he's the president now. And since he's the president, I'm not going to do anything to try to make my country look bad. So, when we do things against our leaders, we make our, uh, democratic society elects a person to lead it. And even though it may not be the person that we would have selected, that person was elected by the majority. And then since that person is elected by the majority, we all try to come together to make our city better. But when we try to divide and separate, especially by people who want that position anyway. If everybody wants to be ahead, nobody, nobody wants to walk the other way around the table. So, when we have amendments and hidden agendas and all this going on, that's one of the reasons I don't attend meetings, because I get up and coming on everything. We all need to just stop and get along and move this city forward. Because as long as we fighting one another, this city will definitely win. And people who are trying, like, you know, some of you leaders just take Mark, for example, they're trying to help, but you'll end up removed. When we might need your help. But then if you're going to, one apple is pulling out, you're going to end up destroying yourself trying to hurt somebody else. You know, we got to get along.
Your trade.
Yes, sir.
Hang on, she stood out minute thirty last night.
I'm going to ask you a question. So, if you was a councilperson, you had got no financial statements the whole year.
Because I was vetoing them, or because I voted against them, is that the reason?
Like, you had received, you had received here. Then you pass an ordinance to ask for it, and then it is vetoed. And then the council overrides a veto, and still no financial statements for the year. Wouldn't you feel a little uneasy?
Well, the thing is, is we know that that's not how it went. It wasn't that simple. We know it wasn't that simple, she may have insisted you receive, but it really wasn't that simple. Because the thing is, is, and things that look like they're in there really not. And a person that has foresight, they're going to be open for things that are going to be contrary. So, when we have a budget that looks like it's a legitimate budget, something that you've been asking for all this time...
I ain't talking about budget.
Right, but are we on the subject of the budget?
Yeah, but I'm saying, we have not received financial statements.
Okay, but we have a budget that we have an agenda, why is she prolonging it?
Okay, so, here's what I'm telling you. If you don't know what's going on with financial, how can you trust the budget tonight when we have received financial the whole year?
The way we can trust it is because for me...
That's a lie, you have to be there the whole year.
Right.
You all want to talk about, oh, no transparency. When were you going to say that you had a problem with the budget? My office has reached out to y'all multiple times. Oh, I'm so busy, oh, I gotta see my kids, oh, I gotta do work on bingo slot machines. Y'all are ridiculous. There's no difference. And to sit up here and not have one single question about the budget, we presented a budget on time, we presented a balanced budget. And to say that you don't have financials, you all were given financial, you were given a financial report about two months ago, you just passed the ordinance, it's not the tenth of the month yet after the ordinance was passed. Let's not sit up here and misconstrue stuff, let's speak to the facts, let's speak to the matter of you voted down the budget, you bring us what you would like to see in the budget. What amendments would you like to see? You all are sitting here, you look just how Ms. Wendy Dupont looked at the state back in July. Please, and ask the administrator, please, and guess what they said? We don't meet the qualifications, and as long as I'm sitting in this seat, we won't meet the qualifications. So, pass the budget, do what you are required to do by state law, since that's all we're talking about now, and get done.
All right, I'm closing the public discussion. Mr. Corsetti, come on, I'm asking you to close it.
Seven-sixty-four Marshall Richardson Road. That's what I don't understand, I thought Gloria, I thought we were close with Jerry Bailey and the budget and all that stuff, all going on. And then you said...
Why did you think that?
Why did I think that? Because you had, you had openness to Jerry to be able to look at anything he had. Am I wrong? I mean, this is what you all made us do.
They attended only two of our meetings.
Jerry?
No, one, one for...
Jerry? Jerry's visiting more than once, if I'm not mistaken, on being here. That's incorrect. So, you guys were happy with Jerry?
We didn't have a budget on him.
You weren't happy with Jerry?
No, no, no. I mean, I'm trying to understand. Let, let me help you understand. Let me stop the clock and help you understand, and the rest of the public. In the city charter, it is up to whoever runs the chief financial officer. The chief financial officer has to come to them here, to, to those meetings along with the mayor, which he don't commission, didn't he, Councilwoman?
They are.
Yes. So, the thing is, that he didn't come to any of the budget hearings. So, bottom line is that they did not come and bring the monthly financials and explain to the council how much money was going out here, and now we find out we're three point four million dollars in the hole, it's on page twenty-nine.
That's where you're at. I, I want a correction on that. Can you speak to that?
Yes. I'm sorry, we can't do it, I'm venting here, we have been working with the mayor, the finance department. On page twenty-six, the three million dollar deficit is because the transfers have not been made. If you look at the top of that page, I know right in front of me, your admin taxes and your sales taxes have not been transferred because we have not received them. You anticipate, we are anticipating when we will break even in two thousand twenty-four. The two thousand twenty-five budget that's been developed is conservative. We've underestimated revenues, and we've basically overestimated expenditures. Have not added any personnel, have not done anything that the mayor has spoken about that is extraordinary because we haven't finished the two thousand twenty-two audit and the two thousand twenty-three audit. And before the Becky Hammond was the auditor, worked for a long time, to get these numbers straight. But you deserve better, and counsel, I agree, you need financial statements. You have year-to-date, through August thirty-first, financial statements in this budget document. So, it's balanced, it's, it's doable, but I think that the mayor and I have spoken about, we need to do a deep dive into the revenues of this city, find out what's, why some certain categories have dropped, why they have not. We need to do this kind of deep work. He and I have talked about cross-training some employees of yours because you need to have redundancy in your offices to be a professionally managed city. You have great potential to do that. And he and I have been working for probably about three or four months. I'm not a hundred percent on time because I have other consulting that I do, but you got great potential, and there's nothing nefarious going on right now. We just have a lot of people who have not been trained in their profession. And we're going to do the training, you have powerful software that you, the technology you use, they can provide you any manner of detailed financial reports, but you got to make sure that's correct. And a lot of the transactions, the chief's not even correct. We're fixing that. Mr. Hurry and I have been working on that. Uh, we've just got all the bank statements reconciled through the end of November. So, we've been working very hard, really diligently, to give you a counsel side, what you need to do your job. That's my opinion, thank you.
Well, I think, honestly, Mayor, I really think you need a, um, person to go in between you and the city council and divide what you know and what they want. And then put it on the table and see what cards are going to be out there to make the full house. Is basically what I'm saying. I even said that about Wendy Dupont to my wife. I hear this is a lawsuit coming up, I know that has to do with this, but I know that's a financial thing. And what I was thinking is, why does Wendy go to a lawyer to go to...
She's representing herself. And I don't confess your man to what we're talking about.
Right, I know, okay, but if we lose it, we're in trouble. That money's got to come from somewhere. It's got to come from the...
It's going to come from everywhere that lawsuit that the city has ever had, like, it's going to be screwed down there.
So, there, all right, insurance coming. But we need to cut those back, thank you.
All right, that concludes, we're closing that, we're going to reopen it in just a second. This is for amendment only. Any council discussion on amendment?
Um, I do have council discussion. I do have council discussion, and it doesn't pertain to the amendment, but it does pertain to respect. Now, I sit here as a councilperson, that I was elected by the citizens, we all do. And if you recall, the last meeting that I attended, I do my homework pretty well, and I guess I would say the mayor does too. Because I stated, if Mr. Bailey wasn't doing what he's supposed to do, I'm quite sure the mayor would do his homework to find a placement, a replacement for him to help Mr. Weary to make sure that things are along the path that it's supposed to be to keep the city from being any negative. And I just believe in respect, it goes a long way. The Bible says, respect those in authority. But also, you would talk to respect your elders. And for the mayor to sit there and say that we're acting ridiculous or whatever, I think that's very disrespectful, Mayor. And maybe you can use another terminology, another vocabulary word. But with all due respect, I'm going to try to respect you to the best of my ability, and I would ask if you would do the same. Thank you.
All right, roll call. On amendment only.
Councilwoman Cake? Councilwoman Aubrey? Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
First Lady Urban? Councilwoman Douglas? Councilwoman Smith?
Nay.
Okay. Because Councilwoman Smith voted nay, it has to be unanimous for the amendment. The amendment fails, therefore, the resolution is off the table.
Yes.
Do you understand how that works? All right, at this time, we move to, um, move to... Wait a second, before I move anywhere, I want to state one thing. Before any budget comes back to here, we want to see every single month, I want to see every single credit card statement for all five cards for two thousand twenty-three. This is, this is not us, every single councilperson, wait, wait, every single...
All right, one second.
It's not that I don't hate you, it's I hate the process of what's been going on here. I want to see every single credit card, and I know it's directed to be just stepped in, and I know you're just all across the board, I'm sorry. All right, and Mr. Murray here the same way. So, I want, we, we, the council, want to see every single credit card statement. We don't want to turn into a business friends, okay? Y'all know what's going on down there, all right? We want to see all income, balance sheets, every single thing that we asked for in ordinance twenty-eight-twenty. And we want to see it before another council comes to this here. We have until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, to pass the operating budget. All right, I want to see that outside of this budget before that, and I want, we're going to have finance meetings to explain those to the council. All right, and you got to prove to us that you're not going to adapt. Go ahead.
I'm already proven it, first off. You, you'll get the documentation, but also, how the budget's been adjusted before, is that for the criticism of the situation?
No, this is two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four.
But what we would like to see is for you all to properly bring your concerns, put it in writing so that we can be transparent, open with the public. I'm sitting in the back room, please, and I feel like we're talking about disrespect. It's disrespectful to come in here knowing what you wanted to do, and you... And you all see me, you see me in the war and building. But we're talking about communication. Communication is a two-way street. And the fact that I called you, multiple staff members called you, and y'all didn't answer. But, oh, we can never get in touch with the mayor, we can't speak with him. I was on a two-way call with a constituent and a councilman starts talking about, oh, I might have a good relationship with the mayor. Didn't know I was on the phone. Then anybody come like they thought, oh, hey, Mr. Mayor. I'm sick of it. Do right. If you have a problem, don't come to me with something that you're doing yourself. Communicate and move forward, and that's how we're gonna be moving forward. I came to you with a budget on time, I came to you with a balance budget. That's what the auditors asked me to do, I gave them my word that I would do. You will get the financials, but the prime example is, this is the prime example why we have not released those financials. Stuff has to be fixed, the general issues have to be fixed. Baby Hammond called me yesterday, you know what she said? I happen to take so much time, baby. I'm sorry I anticipated this, but it's because we can't figure out how to offer funds for 2022. That's a prime example. So instead of me coming to you with information that's half-baked, because you see people taking the wrong with it, you have a $3.5 million deficit. How do we have a $3.5 million deficit if I have to draw the dime from the state? I'm pulling money from the air? But instead of coming to me and asking, hey, mayor, what is this $3.5 million figure? And I could easily explain, oh, we're waiting on our property taxes to come in, which average 3.8, somewhere in that range, and that won't be a deficit. One of the councilpeople just said in the last meeting, why are we accounting for funds and they aren't here yet? Well, we're not accounting for the property taxes because they aren't here yet. And when they give you, we'll account for them. We don't have a deficit. I am not the parade administration, I am not granting a deficit.
So y'all know, the taxes typically bring in between 2.9 and 3.1 million. We, the council already knows that fact, fact. So let's move on, we're moving on.
Did you know this reassessment yet? Did you know that? Obviously not, you're president.
Anyway. Uh, we're gonna move on over to public participation. Uh, next, we have Ms. Daniels. Ms. Daniels is available. Good afternoon, Ms. Daniels. You're gonna have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Daniels. Uh, 8217 East Street, Moses. In the latest council meeting, it stated that the violence here that ceased and the ones talking about it, you can shut up. I took that in offense because if you have not gotten out of your bed at 1 o'clock, 3 o'clock, or 4 a.m., seeing a 14, 15, or 16-year-old zipped up in a black bag, I will not shut up. I have a gun violence authorization. Many don't know that Bogalusa ranked number one less than two years ago. We surpassed New Orleans and Baton Rouge. From 2020 to 2024, there have been 16 murders, only five being assault. This is my job and this is what I will continue to do, and I will not shut up a matter.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next, we have, uh, Ms. Devin McCloud.
Well, I would just say, Ms. Devin, we're going for 14 months to be on this government's most important and you have an opportunity this Saturday to get out and vote, and it will affect your city council. And I am begging, pleading with you, do not sit home if you don't like what's going on tonight. Get us out of your seat and show up between 7:00 and 8:00 p.m. and vote. Council District B, we're talking to you. 28 people of the Southern Paradise District B showed up to vote. This is unacceptable and unexcusable. And anybody who sits here and clacks and is upset or wants to get out of the county or the city or the mayor, you deserve what you get if you don't show up and vote. You should be ashamed of yourselves. All of you people who sit here and complain and complain and complain and can't get off your butt and show up for 15 minutes to vote for one of the most important decisions in this, in this city. And you're lost because when you think about, you're sitting council either ones that are going to affect your life or that anybody else in terms of your financial and safety. And so, really upset. I'm really upset with the, with the smugness of the city come. I'm really upset with the way you presented this, like we've got something and we're going to mend kind of attitude. I'm really upset. I've been watching this go on for a year, two years now, where you don't tell the team what you want, you don't write it down, you don't send anything, and then you complain. And you have, you've put barriers, one barrier after another after another after another after another. And your last comment, Mark, was really out of line. This is not a game of winning, okay? This is not a game of winning. We're talking about people's lives, we're talking about people's businesses. We're talking about all of that. You sitting here acting like this is the game we're gonna win. Y'all should be ashamed of yourselves, and I'm really, I'm so disappointed about the whole thing. And I, I want to think, I'm thankful today about being positive and making change and doing something instead of complaining. And for me, folks, it's about voting. Y'all, if you want change and you want something different, get out, get out of the seat and take 15 minutes to go vote. Bring your kids with you, teach them about, teach them about what voting is.
I think so, Paul. All right, next, we have Ms. Hare.
I'm in. Well, I care, 1601 Sunset Drive, Bogalusa. Tonight, I just want to talk to the mayor about one of the jobs he's been, he's doing with or without this councilperson. You keep doing what you're doing. You are the only man that has done so much for the people of this city, young man, old. And don't stop doing what you're doing, and don't let them down anyway. God, God has blessed you with a job to do, and you're doing it, and you're doing it well. God, I would so bless y'all with God's will, but if you turn your back on God, you're riding with the devil. And it would not be necessary for the voters to continue to fall as long as they have people like you. And it's, so about we have so much black on black crime because we have so much black on black hate. Y'all afraid y'all on me right now, you're not doing it. All the way to the top. And I was 98 with the 10, my friend took this about him. So when he get up there, they could say that was my grandmother's dream, and she gonna be looking down on y'all.
Thank you.
All right, next, we're on the House. Um, Ms. Abbott Preston. Good afternoon, Ms. Preston. Please state your name and address.
Preston, 641 Sunset Street, Bogalusa. We've been going around all over you with this financial. And when I'm hearing that credit cards are being reconciled monthly, and, oh, that's not acceptable on government credit card accounts. Credit card accounts need to be reconciled every month because that card hasn't been paid. In the federal government, anybody that had a government current card, there were rules in which you had to close out that credit card. So that should be another issue. Guys keep asking for financial statements this, financial statements that. Where the financial statements of y'all tracking down our $2.5 million? Is that being proposed in the finance meeting? Is it being worn into the city? Is it being updated? I need to ask, we need to update at least once a month on the status of whether, about that money. Because you're complaining about overspending when the last administration did overspend. But you want to put shackles on the new administration, which you shouldn't did the last time. So you gotta do right. The financial statements that y'all are asking for, y'all know already what is on those documents and those financial statements. A lot of them that don't turn in the financial statements and things of that nature that you're asking for, you have to be with, Mr. Bailey. Pick up the phone. Go down, look at the actual accounting reports of assets and expenditures. But to hold up a budget again and again every year because you feel you didn't get the financial statements that you requested. Now, the mayor's run over the budget. Not all, but we cut the police budget $100,000. I don't know if nobody remembers that.
All right, next, we have, uh, Tobias Roberts. Please state your name and address for the record.
1127 Avenue J. That was just from the mayor, so y'all forgive her because she didn't know what she was talking about. She did not know what she was talking about. Hey, look here, I can say whatever I want. As long as I'm not threatening, as long as I'm not threatening nobody, I can say whatever I want. That's what's wrong with the city right now. You got people who think they can just run this and do this and do that. These people are here, they need the financial statements. They supposed to be, why is he standing here? Why is he standing here? No, Mark, you, as a president, put him out. When other people jump out of line and say stuff, you put them out. You cannot be showing favoritism in here. He is the goat, and everybody else can sit behind and say this and say that, they need to go. That's what a good president will do. You in the position, do the job. That's what's wrong with Bogalusa. You got people in the position that don't want to do the job. We gotta call other people in to do the stuff that they supposed to be doing. The citizens shouldn't have to go through that. You got one say, don't say nothing about violence. Now this week, somebody else getting up in their cabinet to stop the violence. What if them bullets that went down violent after we landed, we would've came through that one? What, what about that? You don't want people to get up here and talk about the violence and the negativity that's going on in the neighborhood? Is y'all crazy? Something's wrong with y'all. We leave new leadership at Bogalusa. The same people that's been leaving Bogalusa for the past 40 years and still wants to die listening to it. How is that? Look at Bogalusa. You got people coming off some jail like, man, what happened? They said jail looking better than our city. How that work? That's embarrassing. Get these people, man, get these people, y'all better quit listening to these people. People don't know what they talking about. Y'all heard that lady, she's wrong.
Thank you, Tobias. All right, y'all want to know? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, 500 10th Street. I'm gonna direct this question to you, Mr. Mark. I look at you, I've been coming to this city council meetings for years, and that's something that you attack the mayor just being stern about what you want. Under the last administration that made mistakes, I haven't heard people in here, y'all. But the stern, uh, uh, saying, uh, questions like any other mayor, so why are you wanting?
I'm stopping the clock right there and answering the question, Mr. Miller. Wait, I'm stopping you right now. The thing is that Wendy O'Quinn Perret provided every single monthly statement. I didn't, she never would not ask for something, she popped to it, we got with it, we saw it. All of our finance committee saw what she had under the hood.
This mayor provided y'all with, with the information I'm needing here too. Another thing, you got a businessman here that's buying the cameras all over the state, all over the city, with the lapidary rules, putting senior citizens in and not, uh, fixing those cameras. And if you've been investigating, dump him for all these buildings he got up having senior citizens in. The lapidary buildings that, y'all said the council not doing anything about that. So let me get the work of Matt do your job. Thank you.
Okay, next. Michael Matthews, please come to the microphone, sir. Mr. Matthews, please state your name and address.
My name's Michael Matthews. I live in 19277 Thomas Road, Franklin County, Louisiana. I am the local 687 union president. And I'm here, I'm here to deliver this letter to the administration. And I was asked to read it. It says that, "On behalf of the Bogalusa Professional Firefighters Association, Local 687, and the Union Agreements Committee pursuant to Article 15 of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bogalusa and Local 687, the Union Agreements Committee has followed all procedures and handled in November 11th, 2024, which we filed with the City on, uh, City of Bogalusa, later amended on November 14th, 2024. Pursuant to step three of agreement's procedures, we respectfully request a meeting with the mayor and whoever he deems to meet with us, which shall be held at the earliest practical date, and present the grievance before the mayor." So, mayor, we ask for an official meeting, and you just get back with us, let us know if anything works for you, and we'll coordinate the meeting between us and the grievance committee.
Yes, sir. We look forward to it. Our human resources director actually reached out to your attorneys as soon as we received the grievance. I don't think we heard back, so I'm happy to hear back from you. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I'll clarify that. The reason you have it is because in agreements with the union's agreements policy that we have agreement with the city, there's a certain procedure, step process that we have. We can't just jump straight to administration. We have to try to resolve the issues of our agreements in-house with the chief. We've met with him, we've done that process, we have formed agreement committee that was processed that we had to reach. So we've made it to that process of reaching out to the administration at this time. You have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer at this time. All right, now, thank you, now. Will they approach and give you this?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you.
All right, now, uh, next, we have Ms. Wendy O'Quinn Perret. Ms. Perret, please state your name and address for the record.
Wendy Perret, 1605 Sunset Drive. Bottom line, city council, I'm here tonight, I'm sure you've gotten this, the general fund statements from the, the Eisner Antner, and the letter that is attached, I think Ms. Kate's backed it up as well. Anyone in the audience that would like a copy of it, to show that there is a surplus of $1.7 million. There is not a deficit. A deficit, which you have no money. And I left $1.7 million, the mayor's been lying to us. And that's the only reason why I'm here. I have been here, I've accepted former administration and taken many kicks for it. But this one I will not stand for because he's a liar on that. And I will say, he's a liar, he's a bit like Pinocchio, whatever. Okay, well, you remind yourself of that whenever it comes time for him to speak. You need to make sure you do your job as a councilperson, and you tell people, sit there, shut up, like there's crazy. Okay? So I'll give you that same respect, but I just want to make sure that everyone knew. If you need a copy of it, I'd be happy to get it to you. Uh, anyone that needs a copy. I just wanted to make sure that this information was getting out, the truth, and not the lies that's being told. Um, I served the city proudly, and I'm sorry that you're having to go through all of this, and, you know, again, just want to make sure that everyone knew there's a $1.7 million surplus, and that comes from Eisner Antner, who is our, the largest CPA firm in the state. Y'all hired him, the mayor picked him, you know? He's lying whatever he says that, that the numbers are, or there's a deficit. Go ask any CPA firm, go to Asian Bar. And I mean, that's how simple it is. Parentheses mean that, I gotta, I gotta write you. This is y'all's budget, and I wouldn't pass a budget for anything either because you do have to have a fund balance, and you do have to know. You can't go to Walmart and write checks and not know how much money is in the bank. So I do applaud you for taking that stance, but I just wanted to make sure that I made it clear and I'll be back at every meeting as long as someone's lying on me. And I'm tired of being lied on, and I'm gonna call a liar a liar, you know? And so that's why I'm back. I'm just rambling, giving my two minutes, and letting everybody hear my voice. I'm just rambling, giving my two minutes, and letting everybody hear my voice like I had listened to yours. And some of your, uh, voices that couldn't read it if I handed it to you and studied it tonight.
Remember, guys, in politics, you have to have mindsets. Mindset, tone of mind. Remember that if you're running for these seats, especially Mayor of Pat. Moving along, Mr. Faith Farrell. Mr. Farrell? Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Faith Farrell, nineteen thirty-one D. replace. Since we talking about lies, I like to ask this previous administration, is it true that they gave away over four hundred six or some thousand dollars for forty of their offers?
It's in here, Mr. Farrell, it's right here.
Throw out, you throw me out. Throw out, you throw me out.
All right.
Okay. Did you ever get a statement from her before she left office saying she could give away more than some thousand dollars?
No, because that was done in December. That was done during Christmas holiday.
It don't make any difference, you, you was in the city, they paid.
Yeah, she was no longer mayor. We didn't even know.
In December, she was mayor.
Yeah, but let's move on.
No, that's the problem, that's the problem here, we didn't know too much. We not having anything, anything solved because we move on.
You will know when all the dust has settled. Okay? All right, thank you.
And another thing, see, I know that y'all would like to talk about the previous administration. You all want to come down on this, on this administration. I see racism going on here, that's what I see. Now, y'all can call it what you want, but I wanna call it one way, the right way. This happened on this issue. You all act like a hundred fifth graders in a green bean. That's just what I see. You all freaking do a job and do it properly for the citizens of this city. When I see you all doing a job for the good old boys. That's why you are holding back against this mayor because the good old boys dictate to you all. Just turn around for that stuff.
You need to, you need to move on. I'm gonna tell you something, you're gonna be disturbed. All right, thank you, Mr. Farrell. All right, Matt. We might have two minutes.
Keith, Mayor, I have to go by this fourth street apartment, seven Bogalusa. Councilwoman Irving said we have to have thick skin. And which you all know, the government had a curse to stem against the good old boys, you know why? Because y'all gonna be popular with them.
Y'all mentioned the good old boys.
If you gonna do what's right, if you gonna do what's right in his side, you're not gonna be popular with the angry, the good old boys. So y'all need to make a choice. Either y'all do what's right, or come next time we get you off the council. And people that got business, businesses that set up in and they play this game, then we need to start keeping the money from going into their pockets. You can't stop with them all. Keep money from going into their pockets. They pay us for booze, so why should we support them? And make them richer and richer. Not saying he's rich, but make them have more money. Y'all sit up there and y'all play these games over and over and over and over and over. We're not running the mayor. Whatever actions we take, we not hurting the hell, we hurting the future of our kids. Y'all sit up there and y'all say y'all for the kids, y'all what like it? Y'all say y'all serve God, y'all for what's right, and God's sake of everything, most everything y'all do is contrary to the will of God. And we know it's not the will of God, 'cause God sit up there with arrogance and stuff. That's why you know y'all serving devil, that's not what God. Everybody up here goes to church. Everybody up here goes to church. I didn't go lead people when he doing the better opposite of the thing that you get up and preach against. Ain't nobody gonna take you serious, 'cause they see what you do, and I, I been down that long. And it hurts when people don't take you serious, 'cause they see what you do. If you gonna preach about doing right, I'm talking about everybody. If you gonna preach about doing right, that, that, that the public see you doing right. Don't sit up there and act like we all dumbfounded and cuckoo. And for a loose monster like that, he needs to shut up. And he needs to start learning about the other people. Because people go by their own office, start living, bitchin' and bashing.
Keith, I'm on ten. Please wire it, burn you out, I want to be placed in place. You never have an election. Go run, and go run next time.
It gonna hurt you losing better than me, because you already in.
All right, Matt, moving along. I'm ministering with arms.
The true power's up.
I like to reiterate what I stated today, um, on my Facebook Live, because I tried to explain this whole deficit situation. And quite frankly, it's sad that an executive for eight years can't grasp this concept. But I'll, I'll reiterate it again. A fund balance is a term used in government accounting and is unique to the public sector, which includes schools and governments. It's the total accumulation of operating surpluses and deficits since the beginning of a local government's existence. So the easiest way all of you all budget with your personal lives, the easiest way to think of this is, the general fund is the budget that we passed, passed over the year. That's your checking account, that's what you're adding to the different department's, to different priorities that the city has. The fund balance is what I like to think of as a savings account. It's not one account, but accumulation of all of your, your assets. The city in two thousand twenty-two started out, according to Mayor Berett, a, a letter dated November first, two thousand twenty-two, to the honorable members of the city council. Uh, the, the two thousand twenty-one article four here for was two million five hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. You see that, to the next paragraph, I'm never rehearing for baby, so that I'm not lying and misconstruing things or being Pinocchio. But large, I quote, "The large majority of the necessary revisions are to provide a better estimate of the anticipated revenues and expenditures of the city for the current year." If the city's revenues and expenditures remain as they are and as forehanded in this budget, listen closely. The general fund will have a deficit of seven hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred and one dollars for two thousand twenty-two, resulting in the ending fund balance decrease. I don't know any other way to put it, there is a deficit. I didn't say the city as a whole was a deficit, I said she ran a general fund deficit, which is what she stated, which is what Eisner Antner has stated, but their numbers are a bit different. Seven hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollar deficit. The mayor has stated, former mayor has stated, that she left a one point seven, one point seven million dollar fund balance, but she didn't tell you that she left one and a half million at least, because we had to finish putting all together, at least one and a half million dollars in past due bills. Energy, center point, every city contractor was knocking down the door when I first took over. "Hey, we're cutting you off, we haven't been paid since October." Some people haven't been paid since the spring of twenty-two. Guess what? My employees, the administration, that's the target. I had my employees pulling out their personal credit cards, paying bills for the city and waiting to be reimbursed. So when you sit here and say that there's a deficit, that's disregenuous. I will leave a copy of this up here. This is Mayor Berett's signature. This is not what I concocted, this is not what the financial department concocted, this is what the horse's mouth gave you. In addition to the one point seven million dollar fund balance, it's not mentioned that one million and ninety-nine thousand was ARCA funds. Those were ARCA funds. So guess what? The money that we made in two thousand twenty-three, once that audit is complete, is gonna be retroactive. Past due bills, they're gonna go back and be recoded to two thousand twenty-two, and you're gonna see a deficit. So yes, let's let the dust settle. And I, 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 I just afford the notion that you all wanna say that you paid attention when the majority of you were on this council and ran and saw this deficit. You saw this deficit, you still approved four hundred and, let me look at the audit, investigative audit, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, even though you had already approved a general fund deficit of over seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. This is what I'm talking about. Stevie Wonder can see this craziness. And we try to sit here and say, "Oh, the city has never been this divided." Some people are dividing themselves. I don't care who the governor is, who the president is, I may not agree with them, but I'm going to respect them. Moving on from that, because that's enough of that clown show. Uh, we've been sitting here and having a lot of people assume, "Oh, the sewer system is a mess." Let me tell you something, the sewer system has been a mess since the early two thousands. We were doing everything we can, we have promises from the federal government about money. We, we will discuss the following at the next, at the next council meeting. Work together. If you have questions, ask. Seek information. That's how you move forward. Not sitting in a silo, sitting in your corner with your friends. I call those meetings a gossip, that's because that's what they are. We're not discussing city lines, we're discussing what we heard on Facebook, and is this true, is that true? I'm not here to sit here and be on Jerry Springer's show. When it comes to our, our wells and our sewer system, we had a prominent business owner over on Cumberland, BNC Hall, streaming from the rooftops. There's brown water. Well, I call it a statement here, because I want the state to know that there's brown water. And guess what? We got the report back, no brown water in the city of Bogalusa. From the State Department of Health. I'm tired of the rumors, I'm tired of the incitations. We got two types of mills here, the paper mill and the rumble mill. Lastly, I want to address this past weekend, we had a great time out at opening night of Christmas in Cassidy. The park is open every day in December. We encourage you all to come out and enjoy the improvements that we made. The Christmas parade was canceled due to lack of participation. We had thirty-one signups, four people showed up. I felt it would be a waste of taxpayer funds to roll a parade with four people when that isn't even a funeral procession. We have to pay to clean up the streets after a parade. And the same people were upset that the parade didn't happen. Instead of complaining, contributing. Far too often in this city, everybody has an opinion, but nobody wants to lift a hand and make anything better. I'm tired of, my team is tired of it. And we're not gonna continue to do the grunt of your jokes, because the only joke here is the trajectory that the city has been on for the past twenty-five years. It's time to get it together. Put the personalities aside, put the politics aside, get the job done. That's what my administration has been trying to do, and we have proved it to you. We got a timely budget, we got a balanced budget, and we still face the games and the clown shows. I welcome any, any input. Anybody who wants to get in touch with me, my office is on this side of, of the building. I have two secretaries, one for internal, one for external. Plenty of people come and request meetings, and they get their views, they get their phone calls. But going to Facebook is not the answer. You're not gonna get anything solved by doing that. But if you want likes and reactions from like-minded individuals.
You don't have the office at the airport anymore?
If you can see me.
You don't have the office at the airport anymore?
Please remove her. I'm sorry. We're not in public discussion.
I like that. She didn't know she came here.
Yes, she.
So with that being said, I thank you all. We're gonna continue to do the tough work, we're gonna continue to make the hard decisions like you elected me to do. And in two thousand twenty-six, we'll have a chance to judge you on what I've done. My job is to work like it, and make sure it's a great policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any other administrative remarks? All right, we'll move into council discussion, and before we start council discussion, I want Councilwoman Cates, Councilwoman Douglas. Councilwoman Douglas, did you see brown water in Bogalusa, Long? Speak from the microphone, please.
Yes, I did.
All right, Councilwoman Cates, did you see brown water?
Yes, I did, so the weekend, with the groundwater, um, at, uh, Bogalusa, Long, at, uh, BNC, at Rockies, uh, because of most of these areas are in District Eight. And I do have photographs, if anybody wants photographs. And I'm glad, Mayor, you brought that up, that we have a good rating with our water, because there, there is a new, uh, one point one act that talks about our sewage and our watering. Uh, if we have a grade of D or F, that, uh, it shows, uh, it just shows a, I, I'm gonna ask the mayor that, if you don't mind. It, it shows that we, uh, we are liable, more or less. So did they give us a grade in the water, Mayor Tron? Did they give us a grade?
This is not a, a, a grading report. This is in response to somebody made an accusation. We went to verify if it did come out.
Okay, thank you, I can check it, pause, okay. I'll answer your question.
Actually, you can go ahead, Councilwoman Cates, with your comments, we'll move around the table now.
Oh, okay, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, this is, this has really been a night that I have a, a couple of, uh, comments, uh, prayers for our city to read tonight, and I want to wish a, a happy birthday, a nice blessed birthday to Mrs. uh,
Teresa Keller.
Ms. Keller for her birthday. Also, uh, there was a question, I believe, uh, you had posed, uh, fate on an individual that wanted to, uh, that had a, uh, that wanted to replace their trailer. So the Louisiana Restore Program is over. It was over October thirtieth. However, after speaking with her daughter, and they, they want to purchase a trailer, they could possibly still use that, that ordinance with the non-conformant use. Uh, she would have to get with FEMA to make sure that they have record of that trailer being damaged uh, by, by a disaster. And, uh, what else? Uh, also, I, I got a note today about, uh, the Pleasant Hill, uh, fire station closing on December thirteenth, and there was a question on the insurance rating, uh, increasing, how that would be handled. Although I wasn't sure how that would be handled, I guess I would have to get with Chief Lattner on it, but, uh, I did get a question a, about that. Okay, uh, Mr. Miller, you talked about roofing, and then there was putting their, uh, their, uh, tenants in, in homes with bad roofing. There is a ordinance, well, it's an ordinance, I believe that the mayor brought back, there's supposed to be checklists and, and, uh, and some types of, uh, inspection for those types of homes. And from what I've seen on the checklist, it's supposed to be, and I believe that, uh, my, uh, personal read will be updated prior to his department, because that came out during, during the twelfth, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen period. Okay, also, uh, uh, Ms.- Okay, also, uh, uh, Mr. Red spoke. Yes, I did receive the letter from, uh, our, our CPA indicating there was a, uh, a, a, uh, a surplus. And it is in the budget, there's a surplus. Uh, and as Ms., what's, what's her name, Ms. Miss Bailey? Had indicated on page twenty-six, it does indicate there is, uh, there's a deficit on, I mean, uh, a surplus on page twenty-six, but it also talks about a deficit on page twenty-six in the budget. The budget is still out, uh, on the council website, as well as on the city, uh, website. My final question is that, uh, let's see. Oh, uh, about the four hundred thousand dollars again, Mr. Bailey did bring that to the attention of the senior investigative, uh, of legislative auditors, and the answer that I received, I did ask about as far as the four hundred thousand dollars and any other, uh, questions that we had on legislative auditors. He indicated it would, it's, it's, uh, forwarded to the appropriate authorities. And as you all know, uh, part of that, uh, part of that, uh, uh, investigation was on, uh, W S B U, uh, lead station that talked about some solid things that were discussed during that time. Okay, Ms. Bailey, I have a question for you. Okay, now, we do hold our, our, um, our meetings, finance meetings, I believe I had sent you a message a couple of months ago, uh, inviting you to our finance meetings. Uh, my question would be, uh, as far as the, the financial statements that we were requested, which are as follows, the, uh, the general fund, uh, banking, the statements, uh, to include copies of the, the council checks, the credit card statements, uh, of all employees and contractors, uh, the vending, we have the vendors seeking that, and we have, uh, detailed, uh, reconciliation report for the general fund, which I, I believe Mr. Weirin paid. He had finished the reconciliation, uh, reports, but I don't know, for some reason, he was not allowed to, to give us those reports and all on, online, uh, statements. Uh, would that be available? I know in your emails sometime that indicated that we would be receiving, uh, the financials and income sheets and, and, uh, some other matter, uh, once a month. So is that still, uh?
Yes, Councilwoman, that is the plan. Um, so when I started looking at some of the data and some of the reporting, the, uh, general entries were incorrect.
Yes.
So the data is not correct. And I told my, I'd rather put out no information than bad information. So the goal is to have up to tenth of the month. Mr. Weirin, I love working at that and getting cleaned up. We hope that early by the tenth of this month, we can give you some, and if there are any anomalies, we can annotate those. But that is the objective, get you whatever information you want that is available, that is correct out of the news, the title.
And I, and I assure you, our finance, uh, committee, meetings, uh, they are, I can, I will send you our videos from our meetings. They're not based on gossip. We went through every line by line item with the, uh, with the budget. And, uh, I, I, I would like for you to review, to review those. Uh, they were passed out, those, uh, those meetings that we had. And, uh, we consider our meetings reputable, you know, and they're open meetings, uh, for all, uh, to attend. Uh, I do not myself take any information off Facebook, uh, to conduct those meetings. Uh, for example, with this budget, we went, as I said, we went through the budget. Uh, we, we contact, uh, the powers that be, the professionals, uh, for our particular information. And now we have you on board, and we look forward to contacting you and, uh, getting information from you and, uh...
Excuse me, one second, before you conclude. What, what position are you currently?
Currently, I'm really a financial consultant to the, they all approve my contract, and financial consultant to the mayor, and his financial team primarily, working with me. Procurement, doing a little bit of payroll, observing sort of operations, and see how we can tighten up and frustrate some people.
So you're going to put in for another position, might you?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you. I, um, I really appreciate that and your, your professionalism, uh, toward us. One other, uh, well, the mayor did address about the water, and he said it wasn't a grade on the water, but we'll be contacting department, I'll be contacting Department of Health on our water, uh, to see what it is. Another thing I would like to say, um, that we would like to keep in mind with our twenty-twenty-two closeout, uh, with that closeout, we are still, uh, wanting to put very much salt. And as the mayor had said earlier, try to speed up either Amner, Amner and Ivner as far as the twenty-twenty-two closeout, because if our, if, if our twenty-twenty-two closeout, I can't reiterate this enough, if it's not closed out and we should, uh, follow on to the, uh, the heels of twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four, as I have in this, uh, resolution, we can be seeking, uh, a fiscal administrator. So we, we need to, we need to, to, to double it up for the twenty-twenty-two closeout, the twenty-twenty-three closeout, as well as our twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-five, uh, budget. Uh, we need to get things, uh, intact. Finally, let's see. I think, I think that's, that's, uh, that's pretty much what I have. But everyone, you are welcome to attend the finance meetings. As I said, the videos are out there, nothing like a video, watch the video. You'll, you'll see, and I'll send it, anyone that wants me to send it to them, I'll send it to them. In fact, I think I would suggest to the president to put it on our website. And you'll see exactly, you'll see us in action. I'm sorry, go ahead, thank you.
Councilwoman Smith.
I would like to thank the council, but thank everybody for coming out. Um, I just want to thank everybody for your calls and prayers and takes and all their concerns during the past two weeks with my son, um, getting to be calm. Just want to continue to thank y'all, continue to, um, pray for him as he has a, a speedy road of recovery ahead of him. Also, let's remember to keep, um, the Marie family, um, in present this time. And let's remember those on the dead affliction that Ms. Ellen had to leave out because of the family emergency. And we're gonna continue to lift up Mr. Austin and his family at this time. I don't want to miss anyone, so that's why I said, let's remember to keep prayers for our fellow brothers and sisters. I say here as a council member, not to go back and forth, but try to do the best of my ability for the citizens of Bogaloo City. It saves my heart for anyone of any age to get up and say, we're not gonna move farther, we're not going anywhere. That's very, um, disgraceful. We're all educated up here. Our future is bright, and we're all going forward. With all due respect to the inn and everyone, I try not to hold anything personal. I've been played with on Facebook, talked about, lied about, not only, but my children. I didn't be making this fun like a two-year-old and say, hey, who was those guns registered to? Who went through a drop, um, who went through, um, a D O B I checkpoint? I don't play with people. I'm not good at playing games. I don't think no one has voted me in or elected me to sit here and play games. And the reason why I said I was not in support at this time of any resolution for any fiscal administration from the state is because I, for one, don't like surprises. And if I feel someone is doing surprise, I'm not gonna go along with it. So no matter the good boys, the bad boys, the poor boys, the rich boys, no one tells a mirror what to do. I'm governed by myself. And I'm here because the Lord made a way for me to be here. And for those of you who do not support me to be here, it's okay too, because I'm still here. And I don't think there's anything y'all can do about it. I'm not gonna be disrespectful to anyone. It's sad for people to tune in to watch the clown show. Well, you know why it's a clown show? Because most of the adults who are in charge are very immature. I'm not gonna get back on Facebook and I'm not gonna play with you. I will say what I have to say once, and then it may wait, may need to wait. I'm not always professional. I try to be, but at the end of the day, I'm human. I don't want to be played with, and my kids damn sure don't want to be played with. I teach them to respect everyone, especially their elders. Now, it goes back to home training, just like a teacher. And yes, I said he owned the Wendy's administration, but guess what? We didn't have a high turnover rate. The information was provided. People were standing before us, getting promoted, not demoted. Or not, bam, your job is gone. And the staff were milers, the firing down to the police officers was not worth about their job. So, back to the fiscal administration. Sometimes we can ask for stuff and it's given to us. Because y'all think it's a bad thing, but they see a struggling young black mayor, they'll come in and try to help. When Ms. Wendy took over, and let's just throw it like we've been doing. She's here, so I'm gonna call your name, Ms. Wendy. Let's play a game. She would say, I didn't ride a rich room to work today. Yes, the streets are bumping, but I'm trying to do the best that I can to y'all relate me for with the money that I have. Was the system crashed? I heard all the computers was crashed, burnt. So we're not gonna go behind nobody's burner systems to be everyone in our administration running a team lead off of them. That, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to be leaders. We're here to make an example. We're here to pave the way for the young people that are coming behind us, the young black sisters, the young white sisters. And as Ms. Tina Ratliff said, she's here in the audience today. This is one reason why she don't want to come here. It's not because this is a hell show, it's because people that are adults are getting acting immature. Now, I'll say, and I'll say to the day that I die, I'm gonna respect you, but you're gonna have to respect me too. That's just the way I was raised. Y'all elected us to make sure that these artists are paying for the betterment of our city. We shouldn't be having to go back and forth and plan on Facebook, this person cut a ring, that person cut that. The ring has nothing to do with the sewer. Let's wake up, people. We're all educated up here. I think everybody over there is educated. Yes, we are gonna have to hire different people to come in and help, but the turnover rate is ridiculous. We're council people. You know how many calls we get? All on lots of boards, things that we're taking care of, we shouldn't even have to take care of. And bless the coal fires, because guess what? They get to the scene before we even back. And what if it was your grandmother who need oxygen? Yes, we're gonna follow what we can within the means, but some of these people's salaries are crazy. And let's get to the mayor. He does above and beyond. Sometime people call him all type of night. He would pull up a post with people knocking on his door. Does he deserve a raise? Yes, he does, but he was new getting in. He tried, I would assume, accommodating everybody. He even once said, when he first got into office, it's two thousand and twenty-three. Things are causing, the salaries have to go up. Yes, we understand that. He didn't just go in and give himself a raise. He tried to do the best that he can too. See, I'm not biased at all. I'm not gonna disrespect you, and I don't think you should disrespect me. And yes, I heard you say, but when you said you can throw me out, that's fine. You can throw me out, but I'm elected by the people. One thing about me, I'm an advocate. You will never be able to shut me up. Because even on your worst days, I will still advocate for you. Thank y'all for coming and have a best day.
Councilwoman Tempest.
Uh, I have your comments tonight. I think enough has been said. Uh, it's been a very long meeting. Uh, everyone be safe in your home.
Councilwoman Reed. Councilwoman Douglas.
I had a moment.
All right, go ahead.
I mean, I heard a lot of people say what we didn't do with the last demonstration. Uh, I don't know if you were aware, but we need a fiscal administrator coming in at that point. And that's because we need his help.
Exactly.
Help. Thank you.
Now, I want to thank everyone for coming. Now, we may agree or disagree with some of the people in this room. I respect, uh, Councilwoman Smith tonight, uh, her vote. I have to, we have to respect everybody. And I'm gonna tell you something, even if it's in the cloud, we had a good morning in the planning zone meeting recently, we did. And, uh, I, I, I can see that people are good, but they don't... Sometimes you, you have to understand and, and read the whole situation. And when we had three accounting firms, we didn't call them, they called us. We want to talk about the budget. And they called us, I'm not gonna mention the banks, I'm not getting back into a shopping match about food, what, and all that, because I don't want to be embarrassed. But I want to tell you something, they were calling us up on this site because there was no one to explain this operator who just came to the finance meeting. We had three open finance meetings, guys, three of them. You're invited to those finance meetings too. Councilwoman Cates, I'm gonna tell you something, she was very thorough. We went over every page in this budget, sixty-something pages, every single page. We were here on Friday night, it started at five o'clock, we didn't get through to what? Eight thirty or eight and fifteen that night? I'm telling you, we don't get paid for those meetings. Zero. After that, it's two hundred and forty-seven dollars over two weeks. And we had to miss work and come up here. So I just, I'm just gonna tell you. And I'm gonna tell you something else too. Eventually, somebody's gonna trademark and land the good old boys, and y'all gonna have to start paying them a reward. Okay? So I want to just leave on that. Uh, I just want to tell you, I want to thank y'all for all coming. And I want to tell you something, no one hates nobody around here. But we did pay for the process, and we hope that process will be cleared up. The county council's blowed up tonight. While I'm here, we won't once again. Then, in the winter of twenty-eight, twenty, all I have to say is, it's a prayer, thank y'all.